Mayor Fraser.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Bishop.
Here.
Councilwoman Fleming.
Here.
Councilwoman Coon.
Absence.
Town Clerk here. Town Attorney.
Here.
And our Consultant.
Item number one would be additions, delays, changes to an approval of the agenda.
I have one change. Under number four, new business. Item number two A. Remitted from the agenda. We got a letter from the D E O asking for some changes to the private property rights element that we've submitted.
Two A.
Yeah. Under Fred Coverline, two A on the second page.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
With the change.
With the change. With the change. Second.
Second.
I'll favor approve the agenda with change, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. Approval of minutes, item number two, approval of minutes for January twenty fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting. So I don't know everyone really good, so. Make a motion to approve.
Make motion to approve the minutes from January twenty fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
I'll favor approve the January twenty fourth, twenty twenty-two minutes out.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. Item number three at this time, guys, would be public participation. So if you can, please step to the podium. State your name loud and clear, so it'll be picked up in our recorder. And this time we'll open it up for public participation. Please keep it to three minutes. Three minutes. Go ahead, have my first.
Laura Inman. I'd like to propose, I have a nonprofit, and we're doing a community fair on June eleventh. And I'd like to have a few ways, since it's a community event, no food will be sold. It's for the community. So I'd like to have to seek approval for the way of the fee, rental fee.
Look at you asking to use the community center.
Yes, sir.
I thought you wanted the train depot, because it was small.
Train depot.
No.
No?
What kind of a community event is it?
It's gonna be a community fair with health, it's health, all different things, job opportunities, like the mental health, smoking cessation, anything health-related. What else for grief? All different kinds of things that's concerning our community. We took a poll, like a survey, and it was all different kinds of things, like job opportunities, like Meridian. And it depends on who we can get to come to it. The Lato County Health Department, the Sheriff Department, all those kinds of people. That was the community.
So it's almost like a job.
It's a more
Similar.
It's a community fair, not totally jobs, but it's like health-related, you know, all, you know, health.
They have one in Lake City at the Richardson Community Center, I think, once a year.
Have you already got your dates set?
Yes, sir. If it's, I mean, June the eleventh.
We don't have nothing on that date, do we?
I don't know, I have to look on the calendar.
Will you look real quick?
Sure. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Once we get the approval, if it's approval, food, either way it's on the appetite.
So it's in the public health department or something?
Public health, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's open.
It's open? Wrong, she said it's open.
It's open?
Yes.
You said nothing sold?
Nothing sold, we're a nonprofit, yes, sir. We're sort of put down, I'm based in Columbia County, but Fort White, outside Fort White, and so my nonprofit is dear to my town, Fort White, mostly.
And for the community.
Yeah.
It's a community fair, it's always like a awareness.
Yeah.
And we got it up for the school a little bit, please.
I'll make a motion to waive the fee of the rental for your nonprofit organization. You know, and I'll put it in the bottom.
Second.
I'm in favor of waiving the community fee for the nonprofit organization to have their event on June, oh.
I have something. Do you want to require a deposit fee in case it's not left clean, because we would have to pay to get it cleaned?
I was thinking, I was thinking, but that would be refundable by
Yes, if it's left clean.
Would you have a problem with that?
No, sir.
Okay. And like I said, that'd be a hundred percent refundable back to you after we get out and make sure everything's clean, then she'll give the deposit back.
At that time.
So basically, okay, so, all right, let me finish, so. All in favor of waiving the community fee and the deposit, or having a small deposit put down for it, a hundred percent refundable for the event on June the eleventh, the nonprofit event on June the eleventh. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
You know, oppose, say nay.
The nonprofit is straight from the heart of North Central Florida.
Okay, you're doing it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for doing it.
Laura.
Yes, ma'am.
Laura.
Laura.
Laura Inman. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Next to speak, anybody else in the audience?
Mayor Ron Fraser. I just kind of wanted to bring something to you all's attention, and I'm sure you're already aware of it. I was supposed to write a letter, but I didn't, but I mean, it's just pressing on me to say something. About a month ago, on a Wednesday, I was up here to pay my taxes and get my tax. And when I came up, the big altercation going on with Jeremiah and one of the other employees, temp forces, it was very unprofessional of both men. Very. A disgrace to our city. It's something that needs to be done about it. I wouldn't please, but I'm, next month, I'll be sixty-eight years old, I've been in Fort White all my life. And that's not a good representation for our town. It's home for me. And it's just something that needs to be done about it. The words that were used, the behavior, wasn't good at all. Ms. Connie was, it was so loud, Ms. Connie and this lady came outside. He all annoyed, and the words were not nice. Talking about himself as mama, calling the N-word, the C-word. That's not nice at all. I'm not. Very disappointed.
He's been, he's been talked to, and we also wrote a letter of discipline. It went into his file.
Yes.
Excuse me, that went into his file, so.
And we called labor finders and told them not to send that gentleman back down.
Well, I mean, it just wasn't a gentleman. It was Jeremiah, just was just as much at fault as the guy was.
Yeah, right.
Especially with him being a supervisor.
Yes, ma'am.
You gotta be professional, you gotta lead by example.
That's right.
And he wasn't doing that that day. I mean, we all have bad days, but no, that was just, I mean, he was coming from the back. I sit in my car, I didn't know what to do. I didn't know whether to put my car reverse, back up and leave, because I didn't know what to do.
Yes, ma'am.
It was going, because I thought it was really spring to go at.
And you're right, it's not a good representation.
Yeah, it's not.
So we apologize that that happened.
Okay, I mean, the people from other towns, the counties were here, so, really?
Right, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, with that being brought up, how many employees do we have right now?
We have Jeremiah.
In the field, I'm not talking all, or nothing like that, just in the field.
We got two.
Three.
You got three now?
And sometimes we have a two.
That's counting Jeremiah though.
Yes.
So my question is, why do we need four people in this town, considering the county takes care of water, lane patrol takes care of the garbage? We're literally litter control and mow, and trash cleanup. I mean, debris cleanup, so I don't feel that we need a fourth man, I mean, at any time unless there's a disaster of some sort. I feel like we're wasting revenue, in my opinion. I watch him, I'm through town all day, I watch him riding around with a gator, I see him riding, 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 and I'm just telling him
Flying, they're riding, they're flying.
Well, yes, ma'am. And so the thing is, I mean, I see, Mayor, I see this, I really do, I see it with my own eyes, and I wanted to address this in this meeting, and I'm glad you brought this up, and that really does
We've got three on this county.
We got three full-time?
That'd be Jeremiah and Buster and
And I will suggest that during the mowing season.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
They do all that mowing too for DOT, that group skate mowing and all that. So that, it does keep them quite busy at this time.
Right, I understand.
And I agree with you that we don't need another full-time, because see, they did have four at one time.
But we've given up the water, we've given up the garbage, and so I don't feel like that it's in our best interest to keep employing all these people. I mean, I'm not trying to cut off by any means, but if we're hiring temp service, we could do away with that. I mean, unless we absolutely need it.
Just monitor that little class in this county, see how they're doing. I know Jeremiah, he works this day off.
I watch him, I mean, I've seen him on, like I said, he does, in the same meeting I had with Ms. Connie, he'll work it too. But we've addressed him, acting in a manner, I mean, if he isn't a supervisor, talking to people. Exactly, yes.
People get mad, but that's not the way to handle things.
Exactly, I agree, I agree.
So, but yeah, try to keep it within the three, if you see there's one strain on the guys, just bring it up top of the board.
I mean, once the summer picks up, I understand, we may need a few, but until then, I'll say we keep it
Yeah, because families usually kind of slow, just like land pick up and stuff, and so, yeah, not a lot of stuff due in the cemetery.
Well, I had, I had painting and cleaning up.
I've seen, I've seen, I've seen, yep.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Long?
I come here today with money to get it, I got my hand up, it's not gonna cost you anything. You remember a few years ago, right after we were out here, where that little valley washed back and it got almost to the highway, and you had a whole bunch of dirt in there and fill it? We had a similar situation on the club. And what I was wanting to know is if I could get permission to move dirt from the club, still on the club, and fill a washout that we're having there. That's one of the things I'm here for, I think.
So we were taking dirt from the club?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I want to be moving a few hundred feet. You know where our parking lot is now? There's that mound of dirt right there? You can move that over to fill, part of it, not the whole thing, but just move part of it over to fill that hole in.
You guys are gonna take care of the moving and everything?
We're gonna do, we'll have it all. Another question. A few years ago, my son and I re-did the train station down there, and I know y'all appreciated getting done and everything, but now I got a favor to ask. We have had one breakdown. And I've got an opportunity, and we'd like to do it on a trial basis for one year, and at the end of the year, looking over and maybe extend it for a second year. But my son is a member of the club, and he's one of our maintenance people. And I was gonna have it, he's got a camper, he wants to park there on the club, he's not gonna pay, we're not gonna pay him, but he'll be there, and he'll be like a combination of maintenance, if we need maintenance at night or something like that, he'll have somebody there, and also security. And I just wanted to run it past y'all, see if you'd have any objection to it. I've already checked with our insurance, they have no problem at all with it. Ms. Coverline?
I think that the council should check with its insurer also, because that's where the asset is going to be insured.
Is there a septic tank out there?
Yes.
Is there a septic tank?
There is.
Yes, there is.
Yep. And we may have to look into that, I mean, if we're gonna do it, you know, one hundred percent legal, I mean, there are
Well, the septic tank was just redone about a couple of years ago, I think it was.
Hmm, it's been more than that, because I did it, so. Oh, but yes, sir, I believe we may have to add, we may have to add drain, you may have to add drain field or something, if we hook a camper into it, but that would be
Well, it won't be hooked into, what he's gonna do, he's self-contained, but he's got a gray tank that takes over and dumps into it.
Right, but still, that
But it'll still be going in there.
Yes, sir, there would be some permitting probably.
Yeah.
I mean
But the septic tank gets used, maybe not a month.
I understand, I understand, but I deal with the state every day, all septic issues, and it's just one of those things, as the city, we would probably have to update that system. So that's something we definitely need to look into, because it may, well, it'll cost money, and if the gun club was willing to foot that building, as a city, I mean, I would have to, but that's just one thing we have to look into, considering we
Because I think that if you all did it, more field than the last time you did it, didn't you?
I can pull a record, yes, absolutely, I'll pull a record and see. I don't know exactly what we did, it's been so long ago.
It's been a few years ago.
Yes, but, but, but yes, absolutely, I mean, as long as, our insurance doesn't have a problem with it.
Our insurance didn't, in fact, they said, now, there'll be instances where we won't cover.
Right.
In other words, if somebody steals the camper, and I said, well, I don't think that's gonna happen, because he's gonna have his truck backed up to it and a lock on the hitch.
I understand that, but
And they said, but if it gets damaged
As long as our city insurance, well, we'll
We carry insurance that covers the city too.
We've got to make sure, I mean, Sheriff Line said, we got to make sure, and then, and then, once, they say if it's okay or not, then we need to go a step further, let the Sheriff Line, I don't know if there's any more technicality to that.
Yeah, this seems like
Sounded like you would want it there almost permanently?
Well, we're gonna try it for a one-year basis and see if it works out any better, and maybe extend it for a second year, but that's probably be it.
They, there's a, after we look at the agreement, see where the liability issue is, but your insurer, your insurer is going to need to know that there's a camper being there, or the twenty-four seven, or in other words, permanently, and make sure that it's going to be covered for whatever instances their insurer is not gonna provide.
Now, I do know, I do know that the state parks have what they consider host campers, that stay full-time at state parks, they're volunteers, they're not paid.
Right, that same thing.
Yes, sir, so I'm wondering if this would kind of fall under that, if they're not requiring any payment, or anything like that, and he's, you know, given a service of security and things like that nature, I think it may fall under that, but I'm not sure.
Wish they'd check with the
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know.
Because they might, they might have us add more insurance on it, they call it, you just don't know. We don't know till we call, so we'll call it, we'll find out.
Yes, sir, absolutely, I mean, I don't think it's, you can't
We can't give it approval or not, but once we check into it, we'll, we'll, next, we'll table it, we'll go back to it, basically, next meeting, and see if we can figure it out.
It'll be another month before we're
Yeah, we probably will be, it's gotta come back before the board to get a motion.
We've got, Ms. Coverline did us some more information, we can go from there.
Once Ms. Connie talks in insurance, then Ms. Connie can call Ms. Coverline, and they can talk to her anymore.
They can even have them tattooed, yeah.
The one thing that kind of undermined is, if all this goes through, and it's, if you have to cactate the sewage anyway, rather than end up in the tank routinely, maybe there needs to be some type of vision, if it's legal, to just hook into the tank with a line. And he want to dump that tank every few days or week.
I'll just cross that bridge when we get there.
I don't think it's gonna be that often, because he probably just went in the clubhouse and used the bed.
There you go, there you go.
We'll get you an answer, Mr. Long, okay?
All right, thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Before we close, public participation? All right, at this time, we'll go into closed public participation. We'll move to item number four, which is new business, Mr. Andy Easton, with the fair housing information published.
Good afternoon, C V G. Yes, good afternoon, this was an advertised meeting that talked about fair housing, I don't know, I sent this to you, did they get the little handout? Yeah, this is just a little information brochure on fair housing, and what the, y'all just want to pass some of these around. The town is looking at applying for a grant from the Community Development Block Grant Program, and in the application, if you do different activities, it helps to make your grant application that much more competitive. And one of the, one of those activities is to hold fair housing, and so I'll just go very briefly through this little agenda here. This is just some general information about the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight. Well, it's the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight amended in nineteen eighty-eight to include fair housing. And the state of Florida has its own Fair Housing Act, and the town of Fort White has one too, I think you adopted it back in the eighties, when the C V G grant program was underway. So it's at all levels of government, as far as promoting fair housing. And what that is, the Fair Housing Act makes it illegal to discriminate in fair housing transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, gender, familial status, and disability. And that's, when we say fair housing transactions, that's of course realtors working on an apartment complex, something like that. Of course, they do have exemptions to that, and that's the over fifty-five communities that you see around the state of Florida. That's a specific exemption in this act, where you have to be fifty-five or over to live in the housing development. But other than that, it's just against law to discriminate on those factors. And so the last item of your little handout here, if you want to find out more information on fair housing, if you want to file a complaint, there's some email addresses, some websites, a one-eight-hundred number, and you can call the town of Fort White. And ask Connie, if you got anything to yell at her, yell at her, and she'll yell at me. And so we can find out what, you know, more information, and there's just tons of it, so if you do have any questions, there's plenty of resources to look into it. And that pretty much concludes my presentation, do y'all have any questions?
Yeah, I think this is a public hearing, right?
But it's a, yeah, any questions that you might have?
No, it's not public hearing, it's closed public hearing. No, I called this morning, this afternoon, Connie said this was a public hearing.
On fair housing?
On fair housing, it's a public hearing.
Right, so if you have any questions about fair housing?
Yeah, I do. What do you adjust that for me? So, because it's a public hearing. Okay. Thank you.
Proceed forward.
Thank you very much. Last page of, of this section says, the policy for the protection of individuals engaging in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations?
Oh, that's another section, not related to fair housing, that's another item on the agenda. This is specifically, this is a fair housing workshop, or whatever you want to call it, if you have a question about fair housing, that's another agenda item after this closes. This meeting closes, this agenda item.
This is not part of
Right, that's next on the agenda.
I'll get to that.
So
The next item on here is, we wanted to try to appoint the Citizens Advisory Task Force, we need five, and we got three.
All right, I read in there we can have three.
You can do it, I think.
Oh, we need five, they used to need three, but then
Oh, yeah, I should have read there, four is what the minimum was. I came up with one, so.
We need everybody
We have two right now that say no on the household income, being within the range, and then we, and we have one yes.
So that would be our only yes, we're liable, correct?
We need three yeses and two no's.
We have the two no's, so.
We need three.
Three yeses.
Oh, okay. The way that's worked is kind of
Yeah, it's kind of
Yeah, it's kind of funky, I mean, if you don't read it, you'll definitely, so we need to
Counsel, we got the, I know you got one, I ended up, I ended up talking to two phone calls, and I got two the other day, so we got, we got, and the council, we've got to provide, what, two more?
Yes, and they both need to be low-income.
Low-income, that's what I was gonna mention, they have to be low-income, because we've already met our standard for the other.
And you can just go by that chart that's in there.
Yeah, there's a chart.
Because it depends on how many are in the family, what the income level is.
So we just need to, we need to get those two, because we need, we need, we need that to happen here at Fort White, because it's really good at Fort White.
Well, and the other thing too, I wanted to share with you is that we're talking about a six to seven hundred thousand dollar grant to rehab houses
Homes in our community, yes.
In the community, yes, and if the inspector deems that it's not worth fixing, then they would be eligible for a new home.
There you go.
Now, Mr. Easton, do y'all listen to the, I guess, the board that we put together, the applicants that still have the paperwork that we have signed, is that, is that your task force board, is that what we're
Well, the task force is actually an optional activity, you're not required to do it, but you get more points in your application if you do do it. And as you would imagine, Citizens Advisory Task Force, they advise the town council on different community development issues, or
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, comments, and one of the things too, that they approved the list of housing rehabilitation applications, it's a highly specific procedure that you follow that the grant requires, but they'll still look at it and discuss it, and then make the recommendation to you as a board. So you wouldn't make the, you would be having, what do they call that, ministerial task is to approve the task force recommendation of which houses to rehabilitate. And the way that you come up with that list, it's a very involved process that the grant requires.
Was there somebody that worked with task force doing all that?
Oh, yeah.
Got you, okay, I guess that was my question, good.
The other thing that Andy and I talked about is applying for a FERBAT grant, and that basically is a recreation-type grant, and I don't know what y'all, you know, we can discuss what we want to shoot for later, but things like putting in playground equipment over here at East Park, or putting something down at the train depot, or
I've been proposing about skateboards, that's, they want skateboards too. Give kids something to do on a recreational grant, I mean, we got playgrounds.
I was gonna say, something
Brantford has one, High Springs has one, I mean, there's no problem of liability, you put a state at your own risk sign, if I'm not correct, Ms. Coverline, would that be something we would have to do, as, you know, post a, at-your-own-risk kind of thing, to give away the liability for us being sued for someone getting hurt on our facility? But that's what I've been approached with. I think, I mean, I think we could probably do something with the county and maybe utilize a little small portion of their property that they own here, and possibly do something there that's
Oh, you're all to our school?
That's adjacent to our school, yes, sir. I mean, give a safe place for our kids to go, I mean, it can be controlled by the Sheriff's Department, I mean
We're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars for it, max.
We do?
But we can, we can propose
No, no, I'm just, I've been approached by it, it's by
I've been trying to get ones of them in here, and I ain't got one.
No, no, I'm just saying, I mean, it's just
That's not hard to come by.
This is the only time we get to talk, so
No, I agree, I agree.
I just wanted y'all to know why Andy is proceeding with all of this.
Absolutely, no, no, great, great, I'll move forward.
Okay. Want to say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's not forget, we've got a park downhill, Wussin's Springs Road.
Yes, ma'am, we do, that's right, that has no, that has no playground equipment, you're exactly right, yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda is Resolution Number R two oh two-two dash two oh six. You'll see numerous items listed, these are policies that are being updated in order to be in compliance with the grant requirements and the fair housing, et cetera. So it's just a matter of updating these policies. Anybody ask a question? You asked a fair hand again. Now, to the floor.
Now, we're on the item C, Miss Connor.
Yes.
And this is the last item, Mr. Easton?
Yes.
We just need a, we just need a
Y'all had it back in, since day one. I remember, I was here in nineteen ninety-seven, working on one of your grants, and I remember all the, so these are just current, current
They need to continue opening public hearing, or it's gonna be closed?
Yeah, the fair housing meeting was closed, and so this is just a agenda
I didn't hear it. If it was, it was. I didn't hear it. Mr. Long, very good comment. Mr. Weston, you can comment.
So this time, I'll close the public, the fair housing public meeting, and we'll move to C and rest, actual motion, the Resolution R-2022-206. Do you remember this much? Mary, what's your opinion?
To approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I need. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-2022-006.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, so everybody in, everybody in approval of Resolution R-2022-006. Say aye? You know, both in name? Give us that CDBG grant.
He's working on it.
Count on you.
We've been working that quite a while.
Why, count on you?
Okay, next is two A that we took off the agenda, so we'll move to, to B.
Get this done, we can talk about this for months now, this two B.
You want me to read it, or you gonna bring your friend?
All right.
Okay. In ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida pursuant to Chapter 163, Part 2, Florida statutes, and Section 166.041, Florida statutes, amending the Town of Fort White, Florida Land Development Code, Section 2.01.02, entitled zoning districts, and Section 3.06, to add a new zoning district entitled residential mobile home two, providing for several ability, providing for repealer, and providing for ineffective date.
Ma'am, that's, that was item two C's in Charlotte, so you can continue with that. You come back to two, two B is a problem.
That was two C?
Two C was read, twenty-two dash three-three.
Wow, sorry. Now, we need to do...
No, you just continue with C. Go ahead and open up.
Public hearing will take, gonna go back to B. All right, so at this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for public hearing for the ordinance twenty, twenty-two O-22-03. So it's open for public, public hearing. Anybody need to make any comments?
This is something we're trying to...
No comments on that? I will then close public hearing on the ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-oh-three. Come back to board, I haven't, we're talking about this.
On the vesting standard?
Yeah, the vesting standard.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-dash-oh-three.
Second, about second. Any more discussion on... No more discussion? All right, so all in favor of approving the second reading, ordinance twenty, twenty-two-dash-oh-three, say aye? All opposed, say aye? And we'll go back to B.
That's the one that I read. You read three.
You read three.
You read three.
No, actually, she read two. She, she referenced mobile homes in her reading.
Mine, mine, mine three says presumptive...
And she referenced RSF two slash mobile homes, so she, she's correct. She read the correct ordinance.
We voted on just three.
No, we voted on three, on, on twenty-two...
Three was read, page twenty-six of the Agenda Pack, it's off of the website. Three, zero-three, has to do with amending the actual code, eight-point-zero-six-point-oh-three.
That's why I was confused, because now it's on two, three.
You mean eight-point-zero-two-oh-three?
Yes.
And part of vesting standards?
Yes, that's one you read, correct?
No, I read O-two.
She read O-two.
For RSF mobile home.
I heard you say Section eight-point-zero-two-point-oh-three.
I said Section two-point-o-one dash O-two, and Section three-point-o-six.
So I'm wrong.
We need to take that, we need to clear that back off.
Which one did you write on?
You wrote it on O-three, on O-two.
We need to, we need to retract.
If she read the title correctly, then it's fine. All it was...
She read about the mobile home?
Yes. Now, he mentioned, and this, this...
I could, well, she read O-three also.
He mentioned O-three.
I, well, we were, we were on O-three. I mean, we were, we had moved to O-three.
We need to retract that.
So...
We need to retract that, come on.
I was reading along, I think Ms. Fleming may have been reading along. I read zero-three, right there, off of the website.
She, she may have misspoken, but, but she read the ordinance from the mobile home, because she referenced the zoning for the mobile homes in, in her speaking, so. We need to retract and start everything, do it. Yeah, because I guess it's gotta go through tonight, because if not, we're gonna have mad people.
So only she read the title, that's the ordinance that you just passed. If I was incorrect, and Ms. Fleming was incorrect, then she read the right title, you're moving ahead. If you think there's any doubt...
And just re-read it over?
Let's do it.
Just re-read it.
Let's retract that.
I'll read O-two again.
We need to make a motion. So we're done with that?
No.
Okay.
I'll read O-two again. In ordinance of the town of Fort White, pursuant to Chapter 163, Part 2, Florida statutes and Section 166.041, Florida statutes, amending the Town of Fort White, Florida Land Development Code, Section 2.01.02, entitled zoning districts, and Section 3.06, to add a new zoning district entitled residential mobile home two, providing for several ability, providing for repealer, and providing for ineffective date.
That, that's not the title that's on the website.
What's, what's in our agenda? What do we have in our agenda here?
O-two, two O, two-two-dash-O-two. And I also have two-two, two-two, two-two-dash-O-three, that's next.
We have a misprint on the website?
I don't, I can tell you what the title says off the Agenda Pack. I mean, Ms. Fleming's reading the exact thing she's reading here, but it's not...
It's like it's off both pages, like it's off both of the readings here, I don't know.
Your packet might have been missed copy, too. It might have been messed up in putting it together.
I'm pretty sure, I mean, I've looked through this. I went through this part of it, I promise you, so.
I know, we got a misprint. We have a misprint of what was advertised in the land, is that...
Well, I was going to go to that. The, whatever was advertised, you can adopt, take action on that. If something else was changed in between advertisement and I'm here, then you cannot take action.
What have, what is...
It was advertised, little advertiser.
And we know exactly what it says on the piece of paper, what we do this. So Mr. Garrett advertised this.
He did.
Okay. So we're gonna go, so we're gonna, we fixing to adopt ordinance twenty-two-dash-O-two, we know exactly, that's exactly the way it was written, it was advertised.
So at this time, we just need a motion.
Well, we still have issue, where is it?
Where do you?
On the website. What's being, you have three files on the website. The first is for the CDBG that we just put there.
You want to answer that? It's, it's all over.
Yes, it's zero-zero-two, the second file. I did all this this afternoon. So the second document on the website, Agenda and Document one-two-three, it's number two.
I agree, that's the file, that is the file that I have opened, if you'll come, take a look at it.
Right, I'll show you. Yeah, that's about the one that was written. This is...
Frickin', can you reconcile what you just read with that?
No, it doesn't have the, um... No, it's not. It's the, um, one, I think that was the old one that's on here on the website, but this is the one that we, we did when we adopted that, to add that new zoning category. I don't know how that happened.
Your Honor, I've had this issue before. I can tell you, not that I can recall, and tell you whether or not you should proceed, but I think out of abundance of caution, when you're advertising two different things, you should proceed with caution.
Do you want to pull the newspaper ad?
Do we have it? I would love to see it.
I believe so.
Even if the newspaper ad says exactly what Ms. Frickin' stated, you have two different advertisements. You have one legal, that is compliant with statute, then you're advertising something else on the website.
Who advertised this? Lowell Garrett?
In the paper, yes.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna call for his resignation, and I'll make a motion to call for Lowell Garrett's resignation.
Well, it might be in the paper, correct.
I'm done with this fellow. I mean, he has held us up, he has done nothing to slow this process down, and I'm sick and tired of it. We either gonna do something about it, or I, I'm just sick of it.
He might have advertised it, I don't know about in the papers.
Something ain't right, man. Something ain't right.
But it's on the website.
We got a lawyer sitting there telling us it ain't right, it ain't right.
But that's on the website, not the paper.
I mean, if, if we got two conflicting interests here, we can't vote on it, because if the website says one thing, and the newspaper says another, here we go, but I mean...
See, does he, what is, does Lowell advertise in the newspaper?
Yes.
He doesn't do that.
Let me do that.
I'm, I'm just gonna sit down.
We do.
We do on website.
We put the papers on the website.
So, let's see the ones that are advertised in the, in the newspaper, real quick. See what Lowell did.
I still made a motion to call for his resignation, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I understand the man's in medical condition and things like that, but he, I mean, he's just hindering the city, in my opinion, and we need to seek other counsel or advice in that situation. I mean, point is...
The one that's in the newspaper, I believe is what I read.
The ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, pursuant to Chapter 163, Part 2, Florida statutes, and Section 166.041, Florida statutes, amending ordinance number two-oh-one-three-dash-one-seven-four, Land Development Code, Section eight-point-o-two-point-o-three D, entitled vesting standards for presumptive vesting for density only, providing for several ability, providing for repealer, and providing for ineffective date.
Yeah, right. So we stop, yeah. And he said, well, it's time that we need to go with here.
You got two, that stuff.
Exactly, that's why he kept saying that she was reading O-three.
Our paperwork, I mean, our paperwork matches everything, but, but the advertisement is endorsing, that's what the public gets.
Six.
Website, maybe on the paper.
Have a new zoning district entitled residential mobile home two.
Yeah, but it's lead, it's, it's, then our paperwork's wrong there. Somebody's wrong here. That is not matching up with this.
This is what I was reading.
The old...
This is three.
Yeah, this, okay, this is two, but it's not starting same as...
Right, I understand.
It's two different...
Yeah. This is three.
Mayor?
We can't.
This is the great stuff, it provides the statute. It's different, it's been advertised on the website.
On the website. And we hit the website.
Okay.
We hit the website.
The website is great. It's not required by law, but it is...
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-first century, but it is the twenty-first century.
Yeah, we're...
Twenty-two years into the twenty-first century. And so, the website, not a legal necessity, but a necessity, did it day and age.
Mr. Cramlin?
So we advertised it on the website, incorrect. So it needs to be postponed, unfortunately.
Just say the same thing.
Somebody, somebody, somebody needs to answer this. I mean, this is getting ridiculous. In my opinion, this is getting ridiculous.
There are both the O-two and O-three.
Let's just not vote on neither dang one of them.
Is O-three correct?
I believe it is.
Obviously not, if it's posted, is O-three on that website? Am I correct, Ms. Cramlin? Is that the way it's, am I understanding this correct? That's O-two and O-three, or mixed up, or what are we getting mixed up here?
I thought she, I was mixed up as to what she was reading on O, thought she was reading O-three, because it starts out with pursuant to Chapter 163. But what we've learned is that it actually is mixed up. O-two is. O-two was advertised in the newspaper one way. It was advertised through the website a different way. O-T, O-two needs to be postponed. We should move on to O-three. Your question was, is O-three on the website the same as what it was in the newspaper? I do not know, I don't have to make much...
I, I seriously, yes, sir.
So, on purpose of the ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-O-two, we're gonna, we're just gonna table that and do that, thank you, that. Let's move on to public hearing, second...
We're gonna have to stretch the meeting right there. Mm-hmm, I think we do, I think we need to.
We gotta have a certain...
We gotta have a certain amount of time.
Hey, two weeks, three weeks, I don't care, it's gonna be four months.
Yeah, what time, what, 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 how, how do we...
We have to advertise ten days prior to the meeting.
Can we do it two weeks?
But no, can this get done, and, I mean, can we run this, this gotta advertise for ten days?
Mm-hmm.
So then, ten days?
I could, let's see, what's today, Monday? I could have it in the paper, probably Thursday at the latest, maybe even Wednesday. I'd have to call them tomorrow and ask them. But that, tomorrow's the first, so that would be either the second or the third, so you could have your meeting on the twelfth or the thirteenth.
Absolutely.
Just let us know, just figure out when, what's going on, get it out, so you know what I'm expecting, maybe a bit. All right, all right, let's go to, go to number three.
Two-oh-two-two-dash-oh-three, and the ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, pursuant to Chapter 163, Part 2, Florida statutes, and Section 166.041, Florida statutes, amending ordinance number two-oh-one-three-dash-one-seven-four, Land Development Code, Section eight-point-o-two-point-o-three-D, entitled vesting standards for presumptive vesting for density only, providing for several ability, providing for repeeler, and providing for ineffective date.
All right, so now, we need a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve the second reading of, of twenty, twenty-two-dash-oh-three. Second?
Second.
All in favor of approval of the ordinance twenty-two-dash-oh-three, say aye?
Aye.
If all opposed, say aye. All right, so now, we move to...
Two-oh-two-one-dash-two-two-six, in ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, granting to Clay Electric Cooperative a franchise related to electrical utilities, providing for the imposition of certain conditions and terms relating to a utility franchise, providing for the enforcement of violations, providing for several ability, providing for conflict, and providing for ineffective date.
Move over to this, that's a franchise agreement between Clay Electric, so, anybody any questions on that? So, at this time, we'll open it up for a public hearing on ordinance twenty-two-one-dash-two-two-six. Want to have anyone? All right, so close, uh, public hearing on ordinance two, twenty-two-one-dash-two-two-six, and I need a motion, if there was, if there was a motion to approve, ordinance twenty-two-one-dash-two-two-six.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-two-one-dash-two-two-six, to prove the franchise agreement between Clay Electric Corporates and the town of Fort White.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of approval of the ordinance twenty-two-one-dash-two-two-six, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. All right, number three.
Resolution number two-oh-two-two-dash-oh-oh-four is a... Resolution number 2022-004 is a resolution authorizing the execution, I'll read the whole thing, a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Fort White, Florida authorizing the execution of the Second Amendment to the memorandum of agreement with the Swan River Water Management District, providing for an extension to the contract end date, and providing for an effective date. This is the water leak project, and all they've done is amend this to allow us time to take the money that was extra and install some new water hydrants, fire hydrants.
Kind of this was the second extension, correct?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I knew I'd request it for another extension because the contractor had an issue getting in the hydrant extension. He'd ordered that beginning of January, and it still hadn't come in. So, I just asked for an extension last week, saw if this is the one that you have or not, but...
I have the second, the second extension.
Would it extend it to the end of March? Just remind, just remind, I guess, the board that got processed. No, we're not, we're not that far ahead. We're still on the Second Amendment to the memorandum, and it extends it to...
February 28th.
Okay, okay, so then, you'll have another one coming up.
So, we need a, uh, approval of the resolution 2022-004. Make a motion to approve resolution 2022-004. Second?
Second.
Any more discussions? So, all in favor of approval, resolution 2022-004, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Resolution number 2022-005, a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Fort White, Florida authorizing the execution of a contract with Next Bill Pay LLC, a foreign limited liability company, providing for the implementation of bill payments, services, and systems, and providing for an effective date. This would replace pay god. They offer a lot more services, and it's a lot more user friendly for the public. The public would be able to look up their account balances online themselves. They would be able to pay by phone. They would be able to pay by credit card, or a lot. They could also have automatic withdrawal from their checking account, which we don't have any of that right now.
Now, is this, is this for water damage and stuff? For water bill?
Yes, yes.
Now, is this gonna, is this gonna go hand in hand with what we're doing with, I guess, the camp? What's gonna happen when y'all finally take over? Because I know right now, we're doing the building. What's gonna happen when...
Well, some people will all be on the same system.
Right, so I guess that's my question. I just thought about that, is that we change it right now, and then, when y'all finally take the building over, whatever it takes to do with utilities or just however it goes.
We can make a change again.
Because it's gonna cost us more money?
No. In fact, it's cheaper.
That's, that's, that's what I'm watching.
It's 2.75% versus what we're paying, what people pay now is 3%.
Well, we ain't got, but when, when are, when are, when are y'all taking the building over? That's my question.
Well, it depends on the ad valorem. It depends on the ad valorem, the garbage.
The garbage, right. So, that could be as soon as, what, January?
I'm not sure. I believe so. It goes, it would go into effect November 22, wouldn't it?
November 22.
And you were gonna get with Mr. Swisher about this? Were you able to get a hold of him?
Yes.
About next day?
Yes.
Is he okay with it?
He has no issues whichever way we go.
Okay.
On the bill pay, we, the town doesn't pay anything. They have to just pay extra on the, when they pay their bill.
Yes, they pay 3%. This would charge 2.34%.
So, it's cheaper for them, but we won't pay anything anymore?
No.
But there is a minimum if the, the town pays $75 if Next Bill doesn't generate that amount of fees. So, you do have a minimum monthly of 75. So, if the customers do not generate that amount in that percentage, then the town will pay 75. Are we generating that amount?
Yes. That's why I said there would be no cost to the town.
I think we're probably gonna continue, two days long if we need it.
Should do the next, you can't change to the next.
We'll get, we changed this new program, it's cheaper, and she says we'll use her family. So, I'm in favor of approval, and going to this next program.
Make a motion?
Yep. I make a motion to approve resolution R 2020-005.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of, of, uh, approving resolution R 2020-05, dropping credit card payment, change from pay god to next bill pay, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Next on the agenda is resolution number R 2022-007, a resolution of the town of Fort White, Florida accepting the proposal of North Florida Professional Services, Inc., related to the town's request for proposal number 2021-02, providing for the authority to negotiate a contract related to the design and construction of a regional wastewater treatment facility Phase One, and providing for an effective date.
Well, that's all about, in a motion to nominate, I guess, North Florida Professional Services.
I'll make a resolution to approve R 2022-007.
Second? All in favor of approving resolution R 2022-007?
Who's second? Thank you.
So, all in favor of approving resolution R 2022-022-07, nominating, I guess, submitting by, or nominating North Florida Professional Services, or so. Say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Resolution number 2021-234, a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Fort White, Florida electing to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem special assessments, levied within the incorporated area of the town of Fort White, Florida, providing for a need for such levy, providing for the distribution of this resolution, and providing for an effective date.
This is the one that's gotta be turning to the Department, right?
Yes, it has to be to the Department of Revenue by March 10.
Make a motion for the, uh, resolution of R 2021-234.
I second. All in favor of approving resolution R 2021-234, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
The next item on the agenda is giving you some information about the summer camp that we had brought up before. I had, we had a meeting with Mario Kopic and Nicole this past week, and discussed some things about the camp, and you have a proposed budget here for the camp. The revenue would be, we're hoping that we can get 60 students to sign up, which would provide $18,000. The expenses estimated to be $27,760. Pilt funds, $20,000, and grants, donations, and in-kind, we're hoping to fundraise $7,500, which would give us a total of $45,500. So, it would be more than enough to cover the camp. The camp would be six weeks, ages six to 12, from eight to five. The monies that are donated will be run through, hopefully, Antioch Baptist Church because they are a nonprofit, and that way, people who donate can use as a tax write-off. If they donate directly, then, we were told that they wouldn't be able to take a tax write-off. We have to have one staff person per 10 children, as well as a janitor, a bus driver, and camp director, which is all in the salaries line item here. There was a sample of a calendar showing different field trips, et cetera. The camp director would be organizing and scheduling those field trips, as well as the other time. They would have a morning exercise program for about half hour, then they would have classroom instruction from nine to 10:30. Hopefully, we'll be able to get a tutor for math and reading to come in for that. Then, we have free play, lunch, et cetera. Lunch is provided by the school board. With the exception of one week in July, and I think we'll, because the school board is closed that week on July 4th. So, we'll go to Subway and see if we can get Subway to donate, or Hungry Howls to donate lunch for that week. Then, in the afternoon, probably one day a week would be a field trip from one to four, and then, they'd have snack time in 4:30 to 5:00, just clean up and free play.
I was just gonna say, this, this is a joint project with the county. The funding for the project would come out of the field fund for the county, which I even do a task that we give for the, for the, and just qualify, uh, for using that money on it. Sort of, this is kind of what we do with the Richardson program up in Black City now. We've been working on this, matter of fact, we're doing, with staff from Richardson and Pastor Sanders with any of that church. He is, we, we don't have time to get a 501(c)(3) by this summer. He's agreed to ask the church if we can do any donations through them, so we can be a tax... Right, right. And hopefully, we can continue this year, year after year, and if we can, you know, by next year, we should be able to be a 501(c)(3) where we can do the donation straight to the, to the program.
Nicole?
Yes.
Do you have anything to add?
Well, I was just here in case anyone had any specific questions. I've been running the, um, the Richardson Summer Camp program for about 12 years now. We've tweaked it, we've changed things here and there, but, um, the pro, the information you have in your packet tonight is samples from our program and what we've done before. Definitely no need to reinvent the wheel. We've been through all those bumps already, taken them. But just being able to mirror the program down here, I see that Town of Fort White expressed that there was a need for something for the children to do during the out-of-school time in the summer. We do include an academic component in there. I'm also a certified teacher, so I actually work in the program and bring the academic component in. We do STEM, we do, um, during that class time. So, we're also bridging the academic gap and not just playing all day long, so, which is still fun, too. But I was just here in case any of you guys had any specific questions on it. Of course, this kind of said the fundraising is a big part that we do during the year because we were able to just try to bring in as much extra stuff for the kids we can without having to put the strain on the parents. The $300 is the registration fee that we charge for the six-week program, which breaks down into about $50 a week. And if you look on your calendar, we do have additional fees that they would pay, like, during the day for the different in-town field trips that we have. And some of those donations and sponsorships would be set aside and earmarked to help any kids that wouldn't be able to bring that every day. Because I understand after you do that registration fee, that's a lot for some parents, and they might need some help with that.
And if we get enough money donated, we could get scholarships as well for the $300. We're also gonna knock off $50 if they have more than one child. So, the first one would be 300, the second one would be 250.
Our goal was not to turn each other.
Right.
First off, thank you, man.
Absolutely, you're welcome. We're putting together a board, um, here in Fort White to go ahead and get some of these things nailed down. We have to, um, call the school board and get a bus driver assigned, and we've also talked to Florida Crown, and there can provide aids. There has to be one in Florida, one for 10, and Florida Crown will provide those, and they are people that they have, young people that they are working with, and do the whole background check and everything, and Florida Crown pays them. So, that would not be a cost, and that would make, would probably make that salary line on it go down a little cheaper. It would be at the community center, Monday through Friday, from eight to five.
And the age group would be 12 to 12. Will this interfere with the other lady that we spoke with? Would that interfere with her pay?
No, it doesn't start until the end of June, and she wanted June 11th, right?
Oh, I, I thought she said July, I'm sorry.
July? Did she say July?
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
This would start till, like, June 20th.
No worries, I'm all for it.
Can I say something? It's, it's a great program, and it will help my grandkids and great-grandsons go to, living in Fort White, but we have to take them to a lot, to the legacy now. So, that would be a great help for, for us, you know, it's a great, great program.
$50 a week for daycare is cheap, right?
No, that's right.
$50 a week for daycare is cheap.
It was a little bit more expensive than that, yeah.
Exactly, and, and if you can get sponsorships and things like that, I'm sure, I'm sure some local businesses in places like that will help out, so...
That's where y'all will come in.
People do not turn down children easily.
I already knew where you was going with that.
I, I just wanted to, it, it is a great program, and I can say that from personal experience. When the program, was it the first year?
It was the very first year.
The very first year, my grandkids went, the twins, and they loved it. They did all kinds of things.
We wanna send them home ready to go to sleep when they get there.
I, I believe we're all for it.
So, is it okay if we proceed ahead?
We just need a motion to move forward?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to move forward with the Fort White Center. Give direct, any way we need to coordinate this, whatever we need to do.
I, I'd just like to say one more thing. I'd like to give a special thanks to Commissioner Williams, he's helped me with this quite a bit.
Yes, sir. Thank all of y'all, I mean...
Ms. Williams here?
Uh, no, Commissioner, right. That's my one token.
He didn't even respond. Believe nothing true.
Williams is such a rare name, you know?
I'll let you get it back later.
Well, he was instrumental in helping us get started. I'll buy that there, I'll give you some more props.
So, we got a board and the rest moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is, um, I think I've mentioned before that y'all have never really seen any definitive costs or maps on the water line that they're considering running from Ellisville down to Fort White. In your packet, there is a, um, cost sheet and a map showing the, um, way that the, the proposed route for the pipe. This will be, um, in the new interlocal agreement that we will be working with, that we will be working with the Joint Utility Committee to amend the water interlocal and the sewer interlocal and combine them into one. So, when you, when that agreement, that interlocal is done, this will be part of that, and, um, y'all will be voting on that then. But we just wanted to make you aware...
Also, at the last county commission meeting, the commissioner went ahead and voted to approve the purchase of all the material for the job. We're trying to speed this process up about six months. So, the commissioners did agree to, uh, to go ahead and get a, get a trail list and purchase of the trail. All, all the material.
Commissioner, I know I've sat in on some meetings, and, and I know this number's a little bit over...
Commissioner, I know I've sat in on some meetings and I know this number is a little bit over what was projected with our with our million dollars and what the county has a lot of. Do we have the money to do this as a right of?
We ever, we ever really just made a vote, motion on this? We need to make a motion.
No, it'll be in the interlocal agreement that they're redoing. When they combine the water and the sewer interlocal agreement and you'll have to vote on that.
I think we gave Mr. Kraus, Kraus from my. I told y'all I was tired. Says stay open. Ms. Kraus was there, we gave him.
We gave.
Yes, we told him. That's right.
We're good.
The formal vote would be on the interlocal agreement, yes?
Is it on the, or has the council talking about giving their councilman voting rights to approve funding that's already been approved for stuff to proceed with it at the at the utility meetings?
That was in the interlocal agreement. Where they approved the million dollars.
I'm not like when we have our meetings, our monthly meetings, which we have one coming up Monday. We talked about at the last meeting, the commissioners voted last Thursday night to allow me and Toby, which are on the utility meeting with the town of Fort White, to be able to vote and go ahead and approve funding and stuff. So I.
No, that's not, that's not, I don't I don't have that on here. But David and Ronnie are would be the two that aren't on the board.
I think they're going to have to at some point have their board to agree to to give us the voting power.
Yes. Did y'all have, did y'all have, did y'all have that on the agenda?
Yes.
Do you think that we need to?
Yeah.
Just going to run that down, so that'd be on the next next meeting because we do need, because we're going to be holding the process up if we can't vote.
And basically where the utility board can approve funding for certain projects that's already been defined and therefore.
Okay, next on the agenda is schedule the next townwide yard sale. I've had a lot of people inquiring when we're going to have the next one. The only thing that I wanted to get some guidance on is that last time we had it, they complained that there were no signs put out. And I tried to explain that we really do this as a courtesy for the town and to go in and spend money on, as you know, signs are expensive.
Absolutely.
And so I don't know, we did flyers and we passed flyers out. We put flyers in Hungry Howie's, Dollar General, Family Dollar, Post Office, Subway. We'll put some over here at the produce stand. But yeah, I got quite a lot of verbal.
What kind of signs do they do they want to see? I mean, I don't know.
Probably little city signs. You like to say, oh, campaign.
They run around the corners and.
Yeah, campaign, citywide yard sale, Saturday, whatever day, you know. I was going to say, you know, if y'all wanted to just do something like you lean up on barricades or something, I mean, I'm sure the signs y'all could make a few.
Right, the county, the county's got the sign shop up there, so if we could request that from them.
Well, I had, me and Ms. Mary had duty last year. And I'll make some recommendations for sure. But I figured out real quick, don't mark the spots.
Just let them find it.
There's done for a shirt, pick your spot.
Do you want to leave the?
That's like perfect cow, man. I said it was a mess.
Do you want to leave the fee at twenty-five dollars?
Yeah. I'd say, but I will tell you this, we need a restroom. We need a, we need two porta potties. We need two porta potties up there by where the rest, I guess, where you can put the food trucks and stuff.
You can get some beds on, but Miss Connie, I'm sure Palomino's out of Lake City would be the cheapest on those.
Yeah.
How much, what do they run at?
What are they, Rocky? Seventy a month, eighty a month.
Yeah, but on a weekend deal, they usually do like two for seventy bucks.
Okay. Yeah, it shouldn't be nothing.
So the twenty-five week collective covered that, you know, easily.
Yes, yes, I feel like, yes.
Be gone in a hole from here.
We could, we could provide two or three restrooms with no, with no problem.
We need golf, we need golf carts here early in the morning, anyway, porta potties. Those older people get there and they don't have a cup of coffee, they gotta eat fast. They gotta make a mess. That woman told me, she said, where you at? I said, where you want one at?
And we're not opening the community center.
I think if you first meet, you'll. I didn't say y'all. I said when they get there, so anyway.
So we just need to figure out a date or?
Yes. Do you want to have it sometime in April?
Yeah, and we need to make the spots a little bit bigger this time, Miss Connie. The spots will cram them in there and.
Well, if we're not going to mark off anything, they'll have.
We can mark them off and you want to, but don't put numbers off. Just say one there, one there, one there.
Check the weekend of April.
Then check your, you need to check your overflow travel law. Make sure there's no travel law.
Yeah.
If it is, you may go be.
Just, just, just get with tourist development with, what's his name?
Paula.
Yeah, but what's the?
It's, um, um.
I can't think of anything.
I'll tip my toe. I got it.
You get with Paula, she'll get with the location.
I don't think. Remember his name?
Alden.
Oh, yeah, Alden.
I'll find one of them. Alden.
Okay, last on the agenda. We are looking to replace a lot of the signs. We have done some, remember before we did a few. But there are a lot more that need to be replaced that are dull and are not reflective anymore and you can't hardly read them on a lot of the different streets. So I got a quote from the sun shop of the county and we need forty-seven stop signs. The street signs have increased from one twenty-four to one thirty. We found six more that we needed to add on to that. Speed hump signs, dead end signs, heavenly rest cemetery sign, truck delivery sign, et cetera, for a total of two thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and forty-one cents. That is strictly materials. They are not charging us anything to man.
Can we use our money that we got that?
The infrastructure.
Infrastructure money?
Yes, we got the hundred and fifty thousand.
We finally got that?
Yes. And we'll get another hundred and fifty thousand next year.
Hey, guys, on this note, then we're talking about roads, huh? I was actually going to bring this up and Donna, I think you will agree with me on this. This does affect mine in your neighborhood. I would like to make a motion and propose that we add two stop signs to a four-way that is, it's a four-way, but there's only a two-way stop right now. And I feel like a four-way stop in mine and Mr. Cook's neighborhood would be a lot more beneficial than spending the money on speed humps. And nobody, nobody's going to get mad over stop signs. Somebody's going to get mad over speeding.
Well, we're not putting in speed humps, we're just.
Right, now, I understand. I'm just requesting that the city allows that two stop signs be put in at this now two-way stop intersection and make it a true four-way stop intersection to slow the cross-traffic down on Dorch Street, or I'm not sorry about Dorch, but Brighton Court. Because kids get down there at the very end of the road and they try to see how fast they can come out the subdivision. Well, I live the second house in, he's the first. So when they come by our house, they're doing fifty-five, sixty mile an hour. And so I'm just trying to slow traffic down. Because all I'm trying to do, and I think that'll be a lot cheaper than the speed hump.
Great stop bars, too.
Do, uh, do we need to have an engineer do a traffic study to verify that that is needed? I know when I was at the county, we had to do that, so.
There are some previous decisions of the court and there's also some statutory language.
Yes, sir.
I think Connie is correct. I do not remember specifically what's required, but there is some pre-determination, pre-evaluation before you act on it. So I would think your appropriate motion would be to authorize Connie to take whatever steps are necessary in order to provide you with what is required in order for you to consider a four-way stop at that intersection.
And you said it was at Brighton and what?
Brighton Court and Walton Glen, I believe. I'll double check.
Or Langtree, hang on one second.
Yes, sir, you're correct. It is, it's Walton Glen.
I was just there.
Two, I believe, it's kind of funky, Connie. Walton Glen is to the northwest and Langtree Glen is to the southeast.
Okay.
And Brighton Court runs, that would be northeast and northwest.
So really we need six stop signs, right?
No, 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 there's already two.
Oh, it's already two.
There's already two there, we just need two more.
Okay.
Yep.
The roads are off two.
Yeah, when you split the four-way, one road's called one and one's called the other. I don't, we don't know why they did that, but yeah, it's kind of, that's kind of funky now.
Okay.
Can we add two more stop signs in this quarter?
Yeah, but well, that should probably be later. They're going to go ahead and start.
Yeah, that would be fine, because we're going to have to do the study.
Connie, I would say if y'all have any of the signs proposed on the roads.
We need a motion.
No, no. Right now, this year, like Jordan Street.
Yeah, we'll wait till October.
As I'm saying, whenever we do those signs, I put, we put new signs in.
Oh, okay.
So if there's anything that's down those roads, then we go ahead and cover those signs.
Okay.
So we can really, this time, we have. So we just, Miss Connie, so you got the direction to check in and study and?
Y'all okay with that?
Yep.
We'll get to the motion as well. All right. Any more about the sound? Anyone else? Oh, yeah. I can, I can add that to that, y'all agree with the, the, y'all, y'all already agreed with the road sound. And don't forget, we need those two more people.
And they have to be lower income.
Yes.
They have to be lower income.
Does. That's the biggest, I'm terrible to say that.
It does, it really does. I feel like that, I really feel like that.
That just is discriminatory.
It's really bad, like, uh. Yeah, I don't agree with it, but that's the way this world works nowadays.
Anything else?
Ah, no.
Could you send?
I signed it. They're supposed to go give it to you over break.
I haven't gotten it in the last grade of the day and he's sitting in there. It's on there, it's very fucking motion to get out of here.
Come on, mom. That was. I thought it was what I need.
Are you going to say?